I'd like to call to order the Lakeville Selectment Meeting, October 7th, 2019 at 5:00 PM. And the only one recording that I see is LightCam. Anyone else recording? So just LightCam. Five o'clock, it's a poll hearing. Midboro Gas and Electric and Verizon have petitioned to relocate poll number 126 on Rhode Island Road due to proposed roadway construction. The poll is to be moved 40 feet east of the existing poll. The poll is located across from La Baron Hills Country Club, somewhat down the street from the country club, but they own the property across the street. And a bottom notices went out, and is anyone here, Bill Taylor might speak to it, but Bill Taylor's from Midboro Gas and Electric. Are there any abutters that want to speak far against the poll moving? There aren't none. I don't know that Bill needs to speak unless someone needs him to speak. He's given us the plan, which if anyone doesn't know, there's a proposed roadway going in there for the La Baron Estates. If you look at the plan, I believe there's two pluses that are going to be built along both sides of that road, and it leads to the existing development that's down there now. So if I make a motion that we approve the relocating of poll number 126 on Rhode Island Road to approximately 40 feet east of its existing location.
Second, and I do just have one question.
Yep.
Does the power get shut in that area for a minimum amount of time? Will residents be notified?
It will be shut off.
Okay.
They'll transfer everything hot.
Okay.
All there is is just primary and a neutral, so there's no need to kill it.
Okay, great, good. That's it?
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. The hallows in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. The other hearings is a 5:15 dog hearing, a 5:30 hearing with the superintendent of the streets, so we have to stick to those times. So just go on to item number four, which is online auction was held, basically, to request to declare town-owned office equipment, office furniture, lockers, cabinets, and appliances as surplus. There was an online auction was held on office equipment, furniture, lockers, cabinets, appliances from the former police station and other town departments. The auction ended on September 27th, 2019. Have attached the brochure from the auction company to show the types of things that were part of the auction. There are still items left, and prior to disposition, the board needs to vote to declare them surplus. The list of items and photos are attached. So my motion is that we declare as surplus those items on this list.
I'll second the motion, but I got a lot of questions about this whole process.
Go right ahead.
So I can blame myself for not perhaps getting a little bit more involved, but did we sell anything? Did we make any money? Was the public informed? What happens to the rest of the stuff if it's declared surplus? What happens if we don't declare it surplus? Where is it? Anyone can start anywhere.
So how much did we get with the sale of items total?
I know there's a percentage. I don't know the specific breakdown, but I can just tell you what the bids were and the invoices that were paid. While she's looking through that, the furniture has a useful life of seven years for office furniture. And so what we did first was we looked through town and saw if anyone in town needed any furniture, had any needs. So we shifted a lot of things first. And then what was left over, we have for this auction, and what's left over from that, we have metal and wood items. The metal items, we can get scrap, and it's by pound. I don't have that rate in front of me what the pound is, so we wouldn't sell it for anything less than we could get it for scrap. But the remainder of the wood stuff, we can do a cash and carry sale for and get rid of. There's really not a lot of great stuff. I mean, there's stuff that's really functional.
Yep.
But it needs some severe cosmetic help, like someone with some good elbow grease would find it to be a bargain. But some of the things that might be of worth are the file cabinets to people. But again, these are very heavy, old, clunky file cabinets that maybe not, people are used to nice motion that happens today with the file cabinets. You're not getting that here. This is some weighted clunkiness.
Yes. And you know, I do blame myself for not getting a little bit more involved because, you know, people, a few people in town had asked me, oh, what would happen to the stuff? And I said, well, it's going to go to auction. I assumed it would be like an auction that, you know, and I shouldn't have assumed, but I, you know, I'm just a little disappointed with the information coming from our selectman's office.
Sure.
Maybe John doesn't feel the same way, but you know, I mean, I can come to the office every single day and say what's going on, but something as big as this, you know, I would have expected a little bit more information coming from, you know, the selectman's office. But, you know, I don't know, we only have a certain amount of time before we can, it's in the old police station.
Yeah.
And we only have a certain amount of time, so I don't know, you know, I would have been willing to try to put a sale together for local folks, but I've had, you know, something come up in my personal life that, you know, I can't dedicate the time to that this week. So what happens on the 14th when we no longer, we either have to move it out of the old police station or...
Well, like I said, on the metal, we can have a home floor for scrappers. Scrappers can come take all the metal. And there's really not that much left. That's wood and some of the chairs and bits, but...
I mean, I do know some nice pieces were repurposed in the offices, because I walked around the offices last week, and some people picked up some really nice pieces that were part of that surplus, but I just think, you know...
And we saved a lot of money by not going and buying new furniture.
Right.
You know, we saved a few thousand dollars for the town by doing it this way. So I mean, you know, and then we got...
How much? This was about the breakdown, but I'm not sure what the percentage, you know, goes to the auction is.
Yeah.
But this is what the invoice is totaled.
About $600 from that online auction. So, I mean, we really did do our best to get the most value for the town.
Yeah.
By not going and having new furniture purchased, when we could repurpose perfectly fine older furniture.
Right. Are we sure we've, it's like I hate doing things twice. Are we sure that we've asked everyone to get rid of whatever they don't want as long as we're...
We sent it out, we can't, you know...
Because I do know some people got rid of their old stuff, and like I said, I've seen some of the older stuff repurposed, and some of the offices look really nice that weren't renovated because of the new furniture, well, new to them furniture, so...
Yeah. And if anyone's expressed any interest, they've pretty much floated by, and Lorraine took them through the police station so they could go look for it. We did tours for the people in the town offices. We made sure that everyone, you know, if they had a space and a need, we could fill it, we tried to.
Okay.
Okay, so we just need to get rid of the remaining items that probably have more scrap value than anything, unless it's someone starting a new business and would use a door for a table instead.
Okay, so if we declare this surplus, then basically only the heavy metal items, what happens to the rest?
We don't know what the rest is going to be, but what happens to the rest? I mean, we can cash and carry, we can do a tag sale, a cash and carry tag sale.
Before the 14th?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We can make it happen.
Okay. All right, well...
I made a motion that we declared it as surplus.
Yep, a second.
Hallows in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll do number seven out of order, only because the chief is here. Review and vote to award bid for janitorial services for the police station. The town went out to bid for janitorial services for the police station to do to receive A1 Clean Team, Inc. and Assured Building Cleaning. A1 Clean Team had the lowest bid and has low bidder. Their references were checked out, and everyone was very pleased with their services. And it gave some of the names of who they have cleaned for. And so my motion is that we award it to the lowest bidder, A1 Clean Team.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done. Hallows in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number five, request from Conservation Commission to appoint Joe Chamberlain to the Master Plan Implementation Committee as their representative. Master Plan Implementation Committee judge calls for a member of the Conservation Commission to sit on the Master Plan Implementation Committee, and they've designated Joe to do that. If appointed, his term would expire July 31, 2020. And that's my motion that we appoint.
Second.
Any discussion?
No, I don't know Joe.
Hearing done. Hallows in favor?
Aye.
Item number six, review and vote to award bids for the supply of propane, gas, and heating, fuel, oil, for preventative maintenance. On the fuel oil side, Standish Oil was the low bidder. And on the propane side, J-San was the lowest bidder. And so I make a motion that we award the contract to Standish Oil for fuel, oil, and preventative maintenance, and to J-San for preventative maintenance and delivery of the propane.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing done. Hallows in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any new business to bring up before we go on to the dog here?
We only have just some things to discuss briefly on what we're trying to do as far as doing some community grants with Freetown. We have that on the list, and tonight, Freetown is seeing if they're going to award some of their surfeit hours to have us do a regional community grant for the community cabinet grants.
You've got a few minutes to tell us about that, Delicia.
Okay. Well, I think I can fill up two minutes.
Go ahead.
So we have some opportunities in town for some of our services that we have. Right now, we need to start getting ready for the eventual online and digital world that we have not been able to embrace, because the state has certain guidelines about how long we need to keep paperwork and files. We want to get ready and prepare ourselves for that. So we want to have everything in PDF format for when that time comes. There's a company called King Systems that has given us a quote for the type of business that we'd be needing to do with them, where it's organizing files, scanning documents, scanning plans. And it comes out to about $75,000 plus an $8,000 planner, what is it, a scanner plotter. And we might be able to get all of that wrapped up in a grant. Well, it happened to come out in a conversation with Freetown that they were looking to do the same thing. And because the state looks favorably on us being able to do regional projects instead of doing individual projects, we got together with the town administrator over in Freetown and asked if he wanted to do, go in on the project with us. So what happens if we do get approved or if we go in on a project like that? It bumps us up to the head of the line doing a regional over doing the single. So we have a much better chance of getting these rare and scarce funds to do projects that we need to. And so not only are we setting ourselves in good stead for this project, we're starting to build some good relationships with Freetown for future projects. So if this goes well, you know, we can, they can use one of their community cabinet grants to work on something that we might have in common. So we're going to have more dialogue about that with, not only with Freetown, but with other budding towns. So...
And the timeframe is just this fiscal year?
This month.
This month?
Yeah, this month. And we're going to see what Freetown can help us out with and bring to the table as far as surfeit hours. And then we can see what part of it we'll need to do and what part we can have surfeit oversee and help us through the grant process. So if we get this, it'll be a win-win, and it'll be more than $80,000 on our side that we won't have to fund ourselves.
Good. That would be good news.
That would be.
It's like a lot of money.
Told you I could fill up three minutes.
Okay, so it's three minutes, and it's a lucky time of 5:15.
Yep.
So there's going to be a dog hearing. Person involved is John Gilmore, lives on Commercial Way. David Freitz, in his capacity as an animal control officer, has filed a form of complaint against the dog owned by John Gilmore, which is currently at the animal shelter for attacking a child. Dog has been at the shelter since May 16th, 2019. The complaint and police report is attached, which I'll get into the procedure and the reading of those in a minute. So I'm going to read, first of all, the letter sent to the dog owner, which was to John Gilmore on Commercial Drive in Lakeville, Mass. "On September 19th, 2019, a complaint of a vicious barking on nuisance dog was filed with the Board of Selectment by Animal Control Officer David Freitz against the dog owned by you and currently being housed at the Lakeville Animal Shelter. A copy of the complaint is enclosed. Therefore pursuant to Chapter 140, Section 157 of the General Laws, the Board will conduct a public hearing on the complaint at the Lakeville Police Station Meeting Room 323 Bedford Street, Lakeville, Mass. at 5:15 PM, Monday, October 7th, 2019. You should be present for this hearing, where you will be given the opportunity to address the Board and present other witnesses on your behalf. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Maureen Cendito." So that's number one. Number two is the summary, a brief summary of many pages of the General Law, Chapter 140, Section 157, summarized, "If any person shall make complaint in writing to the Selectmen concerning any barking of vicious dog, we're charged with the responsibility of handling such complaints at a public hearing. After investigation of such complaints, including an examination under oath of the complainant, we will make an order concerning said dog. The keeper of any such dog may, within 10 days after the hearing, petition the District Court for review. Any person failing to comply with an order issued here tonight could be punished by, could be punished by a fine or imprisonment." The dog has bitten David Freitz twice, is very aggressive. David is concerned about the safety of the public if the dog is released to the owner, and is recommending the dog be euthanized. So the first thing to do is I want to swear in any witnesses, anyone that may speak to this matter, or possibly speak, you may just be sitting in the audience now. So I'd like you to stand and raise your right hand for anyone that's going to speak to it. Swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I believe the dog owner is coming in now.
Okay. Are you Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
We opened the hearing, but because you're the owner of the dog, I want to go back and restate the hearing. I've sworn in three people so far, and I'll swear you in in a second. So just to repeat what I had just said, we sent you a letter on September 24th about the hearing tonight. Complaint of vicious barking on nuisance dog was filed with the Board of Selectmen by Animal Control, David Freitz, and you were notified of tonight's hearing. So I won't go through and read that. The Mass General Law is Chapter 140, Section 157. So just summarize it, just take me a second. "If any person shall make complaint in writing to the Selectmen concerning any barking or vicious dog, we're charged with the responsibility of handling such complaints at a public hearing. After investigation of such complaints, including an examination under oath of the complainant, we may make an order concerning said dog. The keeper of any such dog, which is you, John, within 10 days after hearing, you can petition the court for review. Any person failing to comply with an order issued here tonight could be punished by a fine or imprisonment." And just a short history, and then we'll get into people that want to speak to it. The dog has bitten David twice and is very aggressive. David is concerned about the safety of the public if the dog is released to the owner, and is recommending that the dog be euthanized. So I've sworn in three other people that may speak to it. John, I'd like you just to raise your right hand and swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
Okay, thank you, John. The procedure tonight simply is the speaker needs to be recognized, anyone that's going to speak to it, by the chair before speaking. All comments are to be addressed by the chair. I'll read the complaint from David Freitz, who is the complainant, and then I'll read a police report of what happened on May 16th. So David Freitz, our animal control officer, filed this with the Selectmen's Office. Vicious disposition, so it says, state the facts here. Dog attacked a six-week-old puppy, then attacked a child. We've had the dog for, since, I said, May 16th.
Five months.
And the dog has attacked David at the shelter on a couple of occasions, causing a bad injury to his hand. And in his opinion, the dog needs to be euthanized. So I want to go back and read the police report that was taken on the 16th. And the reason why I read all this is that it's a pretty serious charge, and certainly the state law governs how we should handle these situations. So this is all a public record. So I'll read the police report on May 16th. Officer Andrew Cedequus was assigned to the north sector of town in a fully marked unit, number 162, at approximately 16-13 hours. Dispatch advised that a 9/11 caller reported a dog fight at 5, Commercial Drive by Building 4. I'm reading what he said. "Upon my arrival, I observed several people in the middle of the parking lot. I exited and was advised that the dogs were not here. The girl who was attacked was taken to the South Coast Surgeon Care Center at 12 Main Street for injuries, which was right around the corner from the incident. I've asked, I asked where the mother was, to which I was directed to a female who was hysterically crying. I asked the female, identified as Emily Church, if her and her daughter were okay. She stated that her neighbor has taken her daughter, which we don't identify, to the urgent care with her dog. Church stated that her daughter and dog were bitten by another dog that they identified as a pit bull. I asked where this other dog and owner were located, to which a member maintained, of maintenance advised me that he knew where he lived. I radioed Sergeant Dwyer and asked for him to respond to the urgent care to assess the injuries. Animal Control Officer Freitz was requested to respond to the scene due to the attack on a child and dog. I advised Church to go to urgent care to check on her daughter, so that was the mother of the daughter, to check on her daughter, and Sergeant Dwyer would meet her there. Church agreed and proceeded to leave. Upon the arrival of David Freitz, made an entry into the building, knocked on the door, which time a male later identified as John Gilmore answered the door." I perhaps will leave some of this out. "I asked how we got the injuries, to which he stated, 'I purred open my dog's mouth to get him off the small dog.' I asked where the dog was, which he stated inside. Animal Control Officer Freitz advised him that since he attacked a dog and a human, it was to be quarantined by law for 10 days. Gilmore stated that he did not bite another human and was growling, agitated. I radioed to Sergeant Dwyer, who advised me that the child had significant teeth marks on her right cheek. Gilmore overheard the radio transmission and appeared to be shocked. Animal Control Officer Freitz walked the dog outside and secured him into the rear of the animal control vehicle. And again, I asked John Gilmore if he wanted an ambulance, to which he declined. I declared and responded to the urgent care to meet with Church. Sergeant Dwyer informed me that the dog that was attacked was located at the animal hospital on Clear Pond Road in Lakeville. The dog was treated for its wounds and driven back to Main Street to be reunited with Mrs. Church. Church stated that she did not want an ambulance and was going to drive to Morton Hospital on her own." So that's the summary of what transpired as best given by Officer Cedequus, the responding So first, David, you filed the complaint with the Selectmen's Office. Do you need to speak to it? I can, I've already read it into record. You're more than welcome to come to the podium, speak to it. You don't need to if you don't need to.
No, it's all right, man.
Excuse me?
Everything that you've got there is all listed.
Okay. And John, would you want to speak to this and come to the podium? You don't have to either, I'm just inviting you to.
I would say there was no problems with the dog at all until this incident. He was leased and had a harness on and a leash, and I was distracted talking to two females, and the little girl brought an English Bulldog unleashed right up to his mouth, and just, he just opened and closed his mouth. And I tried, put my fingers in his mouth and pried it apart and saved that little dog's life. And I'm just not going to sign off on killing my, any dog, your dog or my dog. I would never do that. That's all I really have to say. And he's been put in an environment, if you take somebody and put them in a certain environment, if you took a civilian and put them in jail, they might be turned into a different person than they were before. So I didn't have the time to put him into training or anything. During the 10-day quarantine, PBD Property sent me a letter that he was not to be allowed back into the property, into my apartment. And I have a child, so I needed to keep the apartment, and I had nowhere to bring him. So that's just my side of it. I don't believe that he was vicious and aggressive before this incident, and now he's been in a pretty rough environment, which... a pretty rough environment, which might have changed him, but I can't speak on what's happened while he's been in the shelter. That's just what happened during the 10 days.
And part of the, a couple of questions I have is that the state has some pretty severe criteria in that a dog owner yourself would have to have proof of insurance in an amount not less than $100,000, ensuring the owner or keeper against any claim, loss, damage, or injury to persons. So I guess my first question is, do you have insurance of any type that would cover liability insurance, medical bills of the young girl, or anything else?
No.
And so we could not easily release a dog to you without proof of insurance. I don't know that you could get insurance based on the circumstances of based on the dog. So I just pointing that out to you, that that's one of the requirements. You would want it released to who?
I don't have a plan, sir. I just, I'm here because I got the letter, and I'm not going to sign off on killing my dog or anybody's dog.
What would you suggest happen?
I thought that we, first I thought I would move and get a different place, that that was, probably had to be difficult, and then thought of adoption being an option. But now, this new, where Mr. Freitz has been bit, I didn't know about that stuff, where he's deemed him dangerous now, so I don't know if that would be an option at all.
Do you have questions of John, Leah?
No, I don't have questions. I just, you know, I can definitely sympathize, you know, I'm a dog owner too, so I, you know, feel all your, your, everything that you're going through. But we, you know, there's certain things that we can't allow. I also know that, you know, I've seen, you know, our animal control officer work really well with dogs, said to have had problems, and I trust his judgment too on the assessment of, you know, how he evaluates dogs. I know he spends a lot of time with them, and, you know, your dog, and who knows, maybe this incident changed your dog, you know, has proven to be very difficult. So, you know.
This part of it, do you have any questions of John?
No, no, other than what you just asked, what you would like to see happen.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
And one thing that is provided is that in a few minutes, we're going to close the hearing, then we have our discussion, disposition of the dog. If you're not in favor of that disposition, then you certainly can petition the courts to review it and change that disposition. So I just, we make a decision, doesn't mean that you can't move forward yourself and attempt to get that changed.
Okay.
Okay, so you can go online and get a copy of the chapter 140, section 157, and you can petition the courts on your own to voice your own opinion to the courts.
Okay, thank you for that information.
You have 10 days to complete that request.
All right, thank you for that information.
Okay, thank you, John.
All right, thank you.
So what I want to do then, unless anyone else is going to speak to it, I'm going to close the hearing.
My name's Lisa Podolski, I'm the Free Town Animal Control Officer, and I'm the Assistant Animal Inspector for Lakeville. So I've quarantined this dog three times. I own pit bulls, I get it, I'm also a vet tech in an emergency room, I'm around dogs constantly. My concerns are, I've had to quarantine this dog because he bit a little girl. This gentleman never once mentioned that girl. He mentioned that the dog opened his mouth on a little puppy. Secondly, I work very closely with David. I've known David for a long time. I have quarantined him twice because this dog has bit David. I am an advocate for pit bulls, so this does not come lightly. Also, I have been myself at the shelter, and I cannot even get near this dog, and I do this for a living, this dog. Whether it is a shelter environment, I don't know, but this dog viciously attacked a human, a little girl, bit her in the face, and if that alone, in my opinion, is done. We can't legally adopt that dog out without that liability. If that dog goes out and we adopt it out and it bites somebody else, you stated you had a child. We send the dog home with this gentleman, and it bites his child, what's going to happen the next time? Like I said, I'm an advocate.
Do you not think he attacked me? Do you have evidence of the dog biting the little girl in the face?
I do, because I had to quarantine the dog, so I have the report.
Hold on, hold on.
I have the report from the doctor's office.
You have, you have the floor, and I'll let you get up and respond to what she has said in a moment.
I have the report from the doctor's office that states the little girl was bitten in the face.
Right.
So I just, I am not for euthanizing anything if it can be helped, but I am for protecting humans, other animals, and the town. I do feel that this dog would be a liability.
When you say it was quarantined three times...
I had to quarantine it for 10 days for the little girl getting bit.
Yeah.
And the puppy. And it had to be quarantined twice for David getting bit.
Okay.
Every time that dog is bit, anytime a dog bites a human, it's a 10-day quarantine. Yep?
Okay, okay, thank you. John, do you want to come up and re-respond?
Well, I've never had this woman, I was unaware of any of those...
No, no, come on up first.
I was unaware of any of those three quarantines. I was unaware of any of those three-day quarantines. I didn't know my words were going to be dissected, and somebody had a personal vendetta against me, but you said how the police officers said I looked genuinely shocked, because I never saw the dog bite any girl in the face or attack any girl. If it was, it was a simple let go, or hit her cheek real quick and let go once it realized it was skinned, but there's a camera footage, and it's, there is no footage of the dog biting a little girl. That's all I wanted to make a point of. And I just, if I was a dog owner, why wasn't I aware of the other three times that it was quarantined? And they said they've been trying to get ahold of me, I have zero voicemails or missed calls from the animal shelter. I went there for a week, I had my whole arm in there. Like I said, I've never met this woman, I don't know what that was all about. I'm just here because I got the letter, and I'm not going to sign off on killing anybody's dog. And I had no idea that the girl had been bitten originally, as I stated, as the officer also stated.
Right.
This is about a dog, and yes, I have a child, and the dog would never harm my child, never had, never had any problems towards humans or anything, just that small dog that one time. So after that, it was out of my control. He's been out of my hands, I don't have control over what goes on while he's in an animal shelter and being quarantined three times and biting people's fingers. That's like having a jail and meat, charging him with several charges after being in a cell. I mean, I don't understand how that works, but that's all I wanted to say. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, John. Okay, does anyone else have anything to say? If not, I'm going to close the dog hearing at a specific time of 5:38.
Could you make a motion, Madam, please? A motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
So now, we actually hold our own discussion, and then we make a decision. So certainly, my discussion is that we have a police report, which, as John had indicated, he was told of the dog bite by the officer that responded. What transpired between biting the little dog and biting the girl, I don't know. But the police report obviously says that both the dog and the girl had been bitten. The situation of quarantining a dog has just explained, the dog has been quarantined three times, although it's in the same location for each bite, one for the little girl, two for David. So it has been quarantined. And would somewhat prevented, either legally or just logically, from releasing a dog that has been aggressive towards certainly humans, little girl in this particular case. And there's been other cases that I've been involved in, somewhat different than this, where a young child has jumped off a couch onto a dog that was sleeping and got bit, and in some cases, that had even been, not in this town, but had been deemed a dangerous dog when in fact, perhaps was not. But in this case, it did not seem to be any mitigating reasons as to why it would have attacked the girl. And then it could be the environment, obviously. Dogs act differently in their own house environment.
Right.
Dogs get loose, but most towns, and certainly our town in particular, I would not suggest that this dog be released for a variety of reasons, not just the liability reasons, but for a variety of reasons in the dog's behavior. So that's kind of my discussion. So we have the discussion, and we can make a decision, but let's do the discussion.
Right, I agree. Like I said, I, quarantining is pretty standard, you know, procedure after a bite. I pretty much agree with, there's a lot of reasons going on here, but I just don't see how in good conscience we can release the dog, knowing that it's now had this kind of behavior. I don't want to see anyone else, you know, hurt, and there's no guarantee, you know, there's no guarantee that it's not going to happen again, so.
Okay, I want to read something before we make a decision. John, I had mentioned to you that you can go on to chapter 140, section 157, but I want to just briefly read it. Within 10 days after an order issued under subsections, inclusive, "The owner or keeper of the dog," which is you, John, "may bring a petition to District Court within the judicial district in which the order relative to the dog was issued, or where the dog is owned or kept, addressed to the justice of the court, praying that the order be reviewed by the court or magistrate of the court. After notice to all parties, the magistrate shall, under section 62(c), chapter 221, review the order of the hearing authority, hear the witnesses, and affirm the order unless it shall appear that it was made without proper cause or in bad faith, in which the case shall be reversed. The party shall have the right to request a de novo hearing on the complainant before the justice of the court." And then there's other legal implications. So no matter what we do, John, you still can petition the courts within 10 days. Okay? And there's a lot of things that you have to do in order for them to release it to you, and one of them obviously is $100,000 insurance policy and things like that. So there's a lot of things that you have to do on your part, rather than just petition the court. So if we finished our discussion, now we can issue a decision. My motion is that we make a decision to euthanize the dog after a period of time that Joan can petition the courts.
Yeah, I second.
Okay, any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor, aye. Thank you, John, and all the parties for coming. The next thing on the agenda is to, I think the only thing on the agenda is item number Revisit increases in transfer station prices. I'll just read what we're going to talk about. Increase in transfer station sticker price, increase in snowplow contractor rate. So Leah, at the last meeting, we both had some questions of Franklin, of which he went back and the town administrators went back and gave us the new facts and figures.
Yes, there's a ton of information in here, so Franklin, I totally appreciate your efforts, Jen's efforts, everyone's efforts. Thank you, very helpful. So I, what do you want to do first? We'll do the prices first, the sticker first?
Well, increase the transfer station prices, so let's do the prices.
Okay. I know that the gallon bags, the 33-gallon trash bags are the most popular, right? Is that what, okay. To be honest, out of everything on here, the only increase that, only because people have to buy them continually, over and over and over again, is that I don't have much problem with any of these other increases. I still think to get rid of a refrigerator at $20 is a bargain, you know? So if you wanted to discuss anything, I'm open to it, John. If, I can live with the increase on the trash bags, I just, I know it's been five years since we've had an increase, and, you know, I know that we do need to, you know, pay our costs associated with the transfer stations, so I don't want people, you know, to think that we didn't put thought in this. I'm okay with it, but if you wanted to discuss the actual bags, other than that, I pretty much have no problem with any of the other increases on the actual...
No, I think, I think I'm set on what Franklin has proposed, and I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, and then the only thing was here, the hours weren't, was a little bit, we have...
We were going to close on Wednesday.
Yeah.
And we're shortening the hours by three hours on Thursday.
So we have transfer station prices, we have transfer station sticker price, and I just didn't know where you wanted to insert the hours in that. But again, I'm, I'm okay, I'm definitely okay with the one-day closure. I, is there any, the only question I have, is there any rhyme or reason to, instead of 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM, or can we just make all the other hours the same, 7:00 to 3:30 with the Wednesday closure? I just didn't know if you have, like, research that says no one comes at Wednesday, on a Wednesday, I mean, on a Thursday between 7:00 and 10:00?
Yeah, he actually did a count.
Okay.
And we ended up, I think, with roughly 20, between 20 and 30 people in that three-and-a-half-hour period. So there's very little traffic coming through in that time.
Okay. I just, I'm not a fan of, you know, when you look at hours that say, you know, this to that, and this to that, and this, and I'm like, oh, I better take a picture of this, because it's kind of complicated, I would, you know...
Is there one evening set of hours?
Yeah, I had that question too, if, you know, what the evening...
Tuesdays, same evening hours, 12 to 8, 12 to 7 right now.
And then we are open on Saturdays.
Saturday, 7:00 to 3:00.
Plus Saturdays. Saturdays is full day, 7:00 a.m. to 3:30.
I mean, 8:00 p.m. is late too, you know? I think that would give most people a chance to get there on that Tuesday, and there's no change expected on that. That was my only thing why to do 10 to 3:30. So I'm okay with the one-day closure. And like I said, I'm okay with the increases in the, I still think getting rid of some of this stuff is, it's a lot less money to pay $20 to get rid of your freezer even, you know, if you, especially if you already have a permit that you're buying to get rid of your trash on a, you know, weekly basis than paying some of these other companies like $150, you know?
I'm sorry, dear, how much are the bags? What are they, I didn't even realize we could do that. We can actually buy the bags and go bring them to the truck.
Excuse me, could you add it by yourself?
I'm sorry, my name's Christina Bearfoot.
Thank you. Yeah. Should we ask her to come to the podium?
Well, don't.
Okay.
I'm sorry. What's, I'm sorry, you just have a question on the pricing for the bags?
Yeah, so the 15-gallon trash bags sold in packages of five is $7.50. So the proposed increase is to $8. And the 33-gallon trash bags, which are also sold in five bags, are currently 10 with a proposed increase to $1,250. And, you know, compared to some of our neighbors, that's still cheaper, you know, than what they're, like Middleborough's charging $15 for their bigger bags, so.
So the, if we just take this one sheet.
Yep.
Which is the price list and schedule.
Yep.
Changes. You're okay with the prices?
Yes.
But the changes of hours, you're okay with the Wednesday close, but a Thursday, you want it to be open from 7:00 a.m. or will you go with the 10:00 a.m.?
I can go with the 10:00 a.m. because Franklin said that they've tracked how many people actually come. So if they're tracking and there's not, I mean, huge, you know, people will adjust. I'm okay with, you know, and again, we haven't changed anything there in five years, but yet our costs have kind of gone up, up and up and up, so.
Okay. So I'll make, I'll make a motion on this single sheet that we're agreeing to the proposed new prices and the change of hours.
Okay, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the last one is the increase on the sticker.
Yep.
From $50 to $60.
Yes.
And where do you stand on that?
Again, I don't think we've had an increase in the sticker in probably the same amount of time. Do we know? Do we know that?
Oh, five years, around five years.
Around five years. And a lot's changed in five years too, or actually paying more for things to get rid of. And, you know, one of the things that John and mostly John and I agreed to ask for was some more information about what our neighbors do. You know, in Middleborough, you get 12 visits for $25. Even if we raise our price, we're not limiting your visits. So it's for, you could go every week for an entire year for one price. It's not correct? We're not putting in any limit to how many visits?
So my lead operator for the transfer station put a lot of time and effort into the research on the sticker increase, where he found 13 comparable towns.
Yeah.
Not so much neighboring towns, but towns of the same size that run basically the same system we run. So even at $60, it's less than what the average price of stickers were.
Okay. So that would be a $10 increase, which again, we haven't had an increase in five years. I mean, I'm okay with, I'm okay with making a vote on that, Joan.
Okay. So my motion is that we increase the sticker price from $50 to $60.
Yep, second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And that goes into effect physical year, 21 sales, which is what?
July?
I always get confused. When?
Usually spring is when they stop.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So that puts to rest that, and now we're only down to the plow contractor rates. And certainly has, has done it, but I guess if I jump to the summary, I'd say if you had a three-point ton truck with an eight-foot plow with $69, using closing 75, the nine-foot plow on a heavier truck is $73 to $80 and change. And then the next level up, he's suggesting going from $95 to a variety of three different rates, I think, or you already have three different rates. So let's say I'm okay with we heading on that. When we, we've always had some other problem, whether we've talked about quality of trucks, quality of ties. We have inspections. I know that. I know how you do that. They have to come by and we inspect their trucks for whether they're good or bad. And we certainly have had our problems, like every town does, when you have well contractors in the middle of the winter. You have some breakdowns. Couple, couple of questions. I'll lead you into it and say, if someone had a newer truck, now I can say, I can have a 10-year-old truck that's beautiful, I just put new ties on it, rebuilt the engine, I got a new plow. But at the end of the day, I don't mind throwing out to you a premium for a truck that's two years or less. I don't know, I'm not saying that gets me anything, but I'm not so sure if someone's saying to themselves, Jesus, maybe I should get a new truck, but I'm not so sure if I'm going to get a new truck. But if someone had a 10% premium on a truck that was two years or less, I don't know if it benefits us. The other one is very large trucks, and I've never been a proponent of very large state trucks, but you do have a few roads that at nighttime it might benefit us, whether it's Freetown Street, Howland Street, you know the streets, County, Route 79, although we can put a nice heavy truck on there just to get rid of all the tie. But I don't know what you think of the one or two significantly big trucks, or are our roads just too small for them?
I mean, ultimately, if we could get the heavier trucks, the 10-wheel, 11-foot plows, ultimately with a salter on them, it would just make our snow and ice operations so much better.
Do you have that?
I do.
Right here?
Yep.
Which line are we at?
That would be code 70,000, which is the 50,000 or greater, which is, would be a really big 10-wheel trucks with an 11-foot plow.
Do you have it, I guess, on this?
Yep.
Sheet?
So code 70,000.
What's the amount of money?
Amount of money is $120.87.
Okay.
And then right below that is for a spreader body. So that incentivizes people to come in with their own salters. Because as you know, we only run six salters. So in the case where we lose one, or two even, they're salting roughly 12 to 15 miles a road is what each truck is responsible for. So when one goes down, it's pretty significant.
And we don't have anyone today that shows up with a big truck with a spreader, do we?
Last, towards the end of last year, we had one guy come in. It wasn't a 10-wheel, it probably would have fell in the 10-foot plow area, but it was one of the heavier ones, it was a CDL truck.
So he would have got, let's say he would have got $94 to $111 plus 31.
Yep.
Okay. In the state, the big trucks with the wing plows.
Yeah, that one.
You don't want that. Or do you want one of those?
No, the wing plows, I mean.
It doesn't, it like, Phil, I mean.
Yeah, it does.
Mark Army Street, unless it's 2:00 a.m. in the morning.
If you get a 10-wheel with 11-foot plow, like you see a lot of the, without the wing, like you were just saying, Howland Road, Freetown Street, Rhode Island Road, and there's plenty of routes I can put him on where he would stay busy and.
Where is our, where is our biggest truck fit? The ones you brought last year? Is that the 120?
Our trucks. Our trucks are around 95, 94, 33.
Okay.
That's for the smaller six-wheelers.
Okay. So to figure at the 120.87 plus the 31, how does that compare to the, to the state contract?
It's actually less than the state contract.
Right. So how much higher would we have to go to incentivize someone to show up with a, with a truck?
So.
That they come here rather than the state because you pay your bills on time.
So they get the early sign-up bonus.
Yep.
Which is a $5 an hour bonus.
Yep.
So right away, if they're at that 120.87, they go on to 125.87. And you know that anybody who's going to sign up for the state, they're going to sign up early for a $5 an hour increase on their trucks.
Right.
That being said, and then they also have the extended season, which as we've seen, the seasons have been extended. We've been seeing storms going into March, and I think they get another five on top of that, but that.
The only thing I'm suggesting is that we incentivize to get a big quality truck. Now, I've seen some trucks heading down the road, I don't think I'd want to put, that you'd hire, so I guess it's really the inspection thing that I leave up to you.
Yeah. Ultimately, they're only getting paid for the hours they're out there.
Yeah.
So a lot of these guys, their trucks may not look the greatest, but they, they're maintaining them in a way where they know they're going to be out there for the storms. Just the issue we're running into at this point is that last year, the most contractors we had out was 22. And we should be in the 30 to 35 range for contractors out there.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I know you're, you're a good guy, so you didn't have enough people, so you hopped in a truck and went out and plowed.
I don't necessarily agree with that.
So you went out into a truck and you were actually plowing instead of sitting there managing the whole, because we didn't have enough guys on the road trying to clear.
Me, my foreman, and my mechanic were all on routes.
Right.
Which is an issue, obviously, because.
Right. Because if something breaks down, we got to pull the mechanic off the road who's plowing to fix something so that we can now get back two trucks. So they're really, we really do need to try to attract a few people to come. Last year, you had 22. In your opinion, what would an ideal number be of people that you can have on standby or on contract to come and take care of the?
In an ideal world, I'd have 35 or 36 contractors. That would give me, that would be two miles per contractor, and then it also gives, it's a little more than, I mean, a little less than two miles per contractor, but you know when you're dealing with 35, 36 guys, not all of them are going to show up.
Right.
So that would always give me my 33. If I get my 33 every storm, then every route is more than covered.
I don't object to your price increases as you've outlined. And, and talk, talk to them about whether there's an incentive for newer trucks. I don't know. I don't want breakdowns.
Yeah.
But I'm going to leave that to you. I don't object to the, to the rates.
I think the draw with the state rates also is that, with the state, a lot of these guys that are going to go out and plow come December or January, they're not getting paid until the spring.
Right.
Where we're paying.
We pay quicker.
They're paying out within a couple of weeks.
No, no.
Which is a draw definitely for the guys to come in.
No, we want them here, we want them doing quality work, and I'm sure you can get them to do that. So if these new rates are the right rates, I'm all set. I'm always a proponent of seeing pavement, you know me and the, I want to see the pavement, not five inches of ice and pour on the salt down. But I agree with the rates, for sure. And if you wanted to go up on that 120, if the 120 is competitive, plus the 30, I'm all set. So this is your, we're voting on it, so you're okay with that rate?
I mean, if you're willing to go up, then I'd obviously go up.
Do you want to do that $5?
Any more incentive I can give to these guys to bring their trucks?
I'm only talking the big truck.
That's fine. So to put it to 125.87.
Who would argue when you pay more, right?
Right.
Well, that's the thing.
Right.
But I agree. I mean, I think we need to try to get somebody, you know.
Yep. That should.
I mean, we have our manager, our town, our highway superintendent, and our highway mechanic out plowing streets because we can't, you know, track.
I can't tell whether it's money or not.
Right, right, so.
Put some money behind it and see what happens.
Right, and see what happens, right. And then reassess, so.
Yep.
I mean, everything else to me looks, you know, just pretty, pretty standard that you have.
The, the, I guess I'm back on the big truck. What is the current rate that, we're going to 125.87, what is the current rate?
The current rate for, it's a 10 to an 11-foot plow, so it covers a 10 or 11.
Yep.
And it's at 95.
Okay. So you should get people.
Yeah.
Knocking on your door.
Ideally.
So I'll make a motion, we're only talking this page.
Yep.
Is that true?
That includes, includes the guarantees and the incentives also.
Which is?
The guarantees are just three-hour minimums for call-ins.
Yeah.
And then the two-hour bonus for early paperwork and one hour for showing up to the meetings.
Okay. So what I'm doing is approving page number one. I guess we'll call it number one.
Yep.
Where.
With that change.
With that change, only on the large truck by $5.
Yep. 125.87.
So my motion is that we change the pricing structure to Franklin's suggestion for the 2019, 2020 year plow.
A second.
Any further discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor? Go right ahead.
Brian, did I just have an information question or anything? Anytime we raise a rate, people get flustered and unusual. But I would hope that by raising these and increasing the opportunity to draw people in and hopefully can get to 35, 36 or more contractors looking to come in, is there a turning point? And maybe you're not prepared to answer, which is fine. Is there a turning point where the more people we can get in to come in per storm, they're actually on the streets less because it's more manageable, so the cost's actually drawn or plateaued what the old rate was?
So you're not playing catch-up. So, so like I was saying, when you're talking, if I can get it to where it's roughly two miles per contractor, that means your cleanup time, the time you're staying, kept up with the storm, I guess you could say, is so much better where when you're falling behind you're three, four miles per truck, the storm ends, now you still have a considerable amount of time afterwards where you have to catch up and clean up.
Right, yeah. So I guess, yeah, I just wanted to ask that we might be raising a rate, but it actually may be a better return.
Yeah.
If we can get more people out there for less time.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Didn't you know me, I like to call early? I want to see the pavement.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we voted that to accept it.
We just have to officially vote.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And any new business, any old business at all?
I have one more thing. We just completed our MS4 stormwater management, and then two days later, we got a note from the state saying they're going to offer grant money for people starting stormwater management. So I reached out to Rep. Oral, and he is going to be working with me, and I'm going to reach out to Senator Roderick's also to see if we can help alleviate some of the pain that we took on. So we funded it ourself.
Yeah.
Instead of getting grant money. It was an unfunded mandate from the state, but we were told we had to be in compliance. We're in an area of concern because, you know, we have the ponds and we're somewhere they were focusing on. So we got ourselves in compliance, and then, like I said, two days later, we got a note saying that if two or more communities joined together and did the MS4 together, that there would be grant money for that. So we're going to try to go back and see if we can negotiate after the fact.
Yeah.
Yep.
Good.
Okay.
Okay.
That was a nice surprise.
Okay. Anything else? I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Fine.
Excellent.